And here comes Catherine, so let me get.
Oh, good.
Catherine on board and then I'll get the script up. Catherine, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Um, Joe, good afternoon. I am in transit since my doctor's appointment run over, so I will keep myself mostly on mute.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
No problem. Thank you.
Of course, but I'm here.
Okay, we're glad to have you.
So I think everyone's in the waiting room, so. All right, Steve, whenever you're ready.
I am calling this Bay Village Historic District Commission Public Hearing to order at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, April 8, 2025. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order, suspending certain provisions, the open meeting law, including the March 28, 2025, legislation extending the suspension of these provisions until June 30, 2027, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Bay Village Historic District Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform or email staff at bayvillageac@boston.gov. We will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing.
Great. Thank you, Steve, and I will just report on the commissioners who are present. We have Commissioner Steve Dunwell, Anne Kilgus, Senam Kumahia, Craig Douglas, Laura Shea, and Catherine Sikora Nelson and staff Joseph Cornish, Director of Design Review is present. And we've changed the order around a little bit. We've decided to pit public hearing minutes first on our agenda and then administrative items, just because some of the other district commissions have lost quorums as long hearings go on. We don't usually have that problem. But this is just a formatting issue. So Steve, our first item would be the ratification of the March 11, 2025 public hearing minutes.
Right. So can I hear a, has everyone looked at the minutes?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second? I'll second it. All in favor?
All right, I'll just do a roll call vote. So Steve Dunwell?
Yes.
Anne Kilgus?
Yes.
Senam Kumahia?
I wasn't there, so I'm not sure that I'm able to actually.
You can abstain. We'll have you abstain. Craig Douglas?
Yes.
Laura Shea? Laura, you able to unmute? Laura, you should be, you're muted now. Oh, we can't hear you, though.
Try again. Laura's volume is gone.
Can she wave?
Thumbs up or thumbs down.
Okay, what happened to your audio? Okay, please continue.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Laura, maybe you want to rejoin and come back. Maybe that'll help because we can't hear you. Okay, I'll let you back in. And Catherine Sikora Nelson?
Yes, I approve.
Great, okay. Thank you.
So therefore the minutes are approved and thank you very much.
Right, and we will move next to the administrative items which are also connected to our design review application. Our one administrative review approval item, application 25.0508 BV, 38 Melrose Street, at front facade, replace four nonhistoric black wood six over six windows with black composite six over six windows that will match the existing windows. And I have confirmed that these match the requirements of the standards and criteria for the Bay Village Historic District. And just to show you, it's these windows right here.
Yeah. Do you need a vote on that?
Yes.
I propose we approve this review administrative approval.
Second?
Okay, and let me just see if Laura was able to. Let's see her. Oh, she is. Let me make her a co-host.
I think she's coming back.
All right, Laura, you should be able to unmute yourself.
An escort on mute.
Here, Laura. Can you hear us?
Say something.
Can you hear me?
Ah, yes, yes.
Hi.
All right, Laura, we'll just, you missed the vote, so we're just about to do a roll call vote, so we'll just have you abstain. So Steve Dunwell?
Are you asking me to vote?
Yeah, to vote in favor of the.
I'm in favor. I'm sorry, I lost track. Pardon me.
It's okay. Anne Kilgus?
Yes.
Senam Kumahia?
Yes.
Craig Douglas?
Yes.
And Catherine Sikora Nelson?
Ah, yes.
All right. So we will move next to our design review application. And I distributed staff comments. And I'll just read, start from the beginning. This is at front facade of 38 Melrose Street, application 25.0509 BV, door replacement proposal, at front facade, replace nonhistoric wood entry door with fiberglass door with wood grain. Staff notes that 36 to 38 Melrose Street is an early 20th century commercial building that was converted into residential use and its facade remodeled into its current appearance in 2004. The current entry doors were installed at that time. The current application was submitted back in December 2024 and proposed replacing the existing five-panel wood door with a steel replacement door with a six-panel configuration different from the existing door. Staff asked that the applicant explore other options, including requiring repairing the existing wood door and replacing the existing wood door in kind with a new wood door matching the dimensions and panel configuration of the existing door. The applicant met with several contractors and vendors who confirmed that the door must be replaced. The applicant would like to install an energy-efficient six-panel fiberglass replacement door with a warranty that is less expensive than the wood door. Staff recommends continuing the application and creating a subcommittee to view the proposed material for the proposed door on site. If the subcommittee determines the material to be appropriate, it should approve the application with the proviso that the new door matches the panel configuration of the existing door. So before I have our applicants present, I just wanted to show you, I look for a little background. These were the 2004 plans of the conversion of the building. At the top, this was the original commercial configuration. And here is the building as it appears now and as it was approved in 2004. This is the door in question and it has the one, two, three, five-panel configuration. It also is an exact match to the door at 36 Melrose Street. So this is 36 and this is 38. Here's what the front of the building looked like before the conversion. Here is another view. And here it is today. This, this door is actually not being replaced. It's this door here, but they are identical. And I do want to say, you know, thank you to Jacob. It's finally to, nice to meet you virtually. You know, we've had a lot of back and forth on how to handle this and it's before the commission because it's been kind of a puzzle what to do here. We, you know, we have a 2004 facade. The door must be replaced. It can't be repaired. And I know Jacob has looked at a lot of options. So let's hear from Jacob and I have also made Jay a co-host as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Joe. And in advance or before anything else, thank you for all your time because I know it has been a lot of emails and a few phone calls. And you've given us a lot of resources. So for the couple of you on the call that actually know me personally, you know that I'm a geek and that when faced with this challenge, the geek in me was trying to find a way to make everything perfect and I've run into some hiccups. So hopefully everyone can appreciate the presentation. And if at any point anyone, I'm not, I've never done this before. So if anyone has any additional insight that you think I may have missed, please don't hesitate at the end to share because we've put in a lot of hours to try and find a perfect solution. Jay had texted me saying that his mic and video are disabled by host. Is there a way to enable that?
Yeah, let me just, I thought I made him a co-host. Let me just double check that. Uh, no, I didn't. All right, Jay, you should be all set now. If you want to test to see if you can unmute yourself and start your video.
Can you folks hear me?
Yes, we can.
My video is not working, but if I pop out, I could leave it unless you don't care to see me.
We can hear you fine. Let's, let's continue. We don't want to lose you.
Gotcha. Okay, great.
Thanks, Jay. So we respectfully propose upgrading the existial wood, existing wood door to a high-quality fiberglass alternative designed to replicate the original appearance in detail. As he had mentioned originally, we looked at, I looked at steel doors, but there's just no, there's no matching anything with a steel door because you can't do any kind of wood grain with a steel door. So while that is still a cheaper, cheaper alternative, it felt a little bit like a shortcut at that point. So we just removed the idea of a steel door altogether. Fiberglass doors are superior for their durability, obviously for weather, warping and rot, being that, that of course it's not wood, which is obviously things that affect wood traditionally. A lot of modern techniques can be altered to custom craft these doors and we've looked through, I've exhausted through all of the companies that I've worked with, looking at a fiberglass option as well as the wood option for the exact paneling. And unfortunately, the only way to get the exact panel, paneling as the next door neighbor is to do a wood door because that paneling, even though fiberglass and steel doors can be custom-made, the templates that are used are the same templates with all of these companies. So unfortunately, while there are different panel configurations, this was the, the one that we had looked at was the closest match that we could possibly find. And every single person who provided that alternate proposal for fiberglass had the exact same examples of those paneling. Aside from that, like I said, the, the wood grain is intact in the, the design of fiberglass where it is not in steel. And our ultimate goal here is to have a safe, secure door while maintaining the character of the neighborhood and of the building. But as we'll go through this, you'll see some of the hurdles that we've gone through in the process.
Go to the next.
So on the left is the, the current door. So that is a, an up close photo of the door as it is currently. And then on the right-hand side is the, both a mock photo in the middle there of the proposed door. Now it doesn't have the 38, but of course that would be moved over to the door. So everything in terms of the finishes and the color of those finishes from the type of handle, locking mechanism, the kick plate, the number, the knocker with people and the mail slot would all be uniform as well as the historic color as well. But you can see what Joseph pointed out there about the paneling of this is vertical panels versus the horizontal bottom and top panels. Initially, the, the thing that Joe and I exhausted was trying to find a company that could reuse the door that we have. Because the door itself is not damaged. It's the, the, the challenge. Well, I guess that's up for debate with the people that came and viewed. So the, the frame has exceptional damage between a break-in that occurred and just time. The door, the only damage that some people argued was the frame or was the door is that it looks like, and you can almost see a slight tilt on the left-hand side photo that the door is slightly tilting down as you go to the right of that photo. And so that is the case. So most of the right side of the door, you can stick a pencil through the top of the door because there's an air gap in the door. So again, the ultimate goal here was we were hoping we could just keep the door, get a new frame installed to match the door and then that would be the perfect scenario. Unfortunately, no one is willing to take on that project. Everyone has come back and writing that it has to be the door and the frame. It can't be one without the other. And then on the far, far right is an example, while it's not, of course, to the, to the color, it's an example of a fiberglass door sample that could then be, be colored. You can see, I wanted to make sure I got a piece of that framework so that you could see it compared to what's behind it, which is the true door. So these were the different vendors. Originally I had gotten, I think, three or four quotes. Of course, all these quotes were pre-tariffs, so any numbers that I'm quoting here are going to be from earlier this year. They're not going, they're not going to be, yeah, me, I thought so too, Steve. When I, when I initially shared this information, when I, when I had initially reached out to Joe and shared this information, Joe, in the nicest possible way, you could almost see his expression through the phone. He's like, that can't be, that can't be real. Those weren't his exact words, but that's, that was me reading between the lines. And so we continued to go down this hole of, there's got to be, you know, I get that some people are gonna, gonna try and work an angle. There's got to be someone who can either do the restoration, if that's possible, or can give me a more reasonable quote on a wood door. And like I said, this, I think the latest quote I got was mid-February or maybe mid-late February. And these, these were the companies sourced and this was the range of prices given from those companies. Again, restating here that all of them said that there was too much damage to both items, that both items would need to be replaced. And, and you can't build one, a custom build, you can't build one without building the other, which again, I'm, I'm not a wood specialist. There's a reason that Jay is on this call today as someone who works in this industry. So this is all learning for me. And then the fiberglass door, that's just the pricing on it at the bottom.
Can I ask a quick question for clarification? So the price of the fiberglass at 11,000, does that include the installation and the frame or?
Yes, correct. This is Jay speaking. So yeah, that's, that's the entire system installation, taxes removal. That is everything.
And the, the, the other quotes, the 23 to 27 quotes are, that would be for what exactly?
The, the same exact, that's, that's the, that, that other pricing is the range for those other companies based on them taking on the project as the alternative doing wood.
In wood, oh, okay. So that's the wood, the wood price is the high price and the fiberglass is the lower price, but each of them is the whole job.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good question.
One thing I, I will point out, I mean, we don't typically take costs into consideration when we're making decisions, but I think we need, you know, really to focus on if the material, you know, our, our new design guidelines do allow us to consider composite materials and, you know, that's why I'm suggesting doing a site visit. You know, I think the the question is having two doors with different types of panels. You know, the interesting thing is, you know, these are not historic doors, you know, these are 2004 doors and, you know, they, they never existed on this building. And it's curious, you know, why, why was this panel configuration proposed back then? You know, it's, it's, it wasn't based on anything, right? It wasn't based on anything. But, you know, they're two identical doors. So, you know, the question is, you know, one of the questions is, you know, how you know, having the symmetry of the building with two different doors. You know, in the future, if 36 is replaced, then maybe it's, you know, it needs to match the six-panel door that might be approved by the commission. So, you know, these are all, all types of things, you know, for you to take, take into consideration.
Some people think in architecture, a little difference is good, too. Do you know that? So uh, they're awfully alike. I, 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 I really think you've done a great job, Jacob, and I, I can't be on the subcommittee due to, I've just curtailed some of my activities, but I have no trouble with this.
And thank you for, thank you for that. So warranty, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I don't have any trouble with it.
So warranty information, I was, again, this is coming at this from never having done this before. No one with a wood, who is installing a wood door will give more than a five-year warranty. Whereas the, and, and those warranties are, are not transferable. Whereas doing the proposed work with Jay with the fiberglass door not only has a lifetime warranty, but is also transferable between owners. For those that know us in the community, we have a one-year-old. We don't plan on going anywhere. We never plan on renting this place out. So that's why, having only moved here six months ago, this is a priority for us because this is a long-term investment for us, not a, we're here for a year or two kind of deal.
Uh, Jacob, if I may just add, and I'm sorry, I know no one asked for it, but members of the committee, this is a Provia door, so it's very custom and it is a craftsman's door. It, it is exactly custom to Jacob and his family's home. And it's an entire system and, and really it's, I just want to make it really clear that it's not an off-the-rack door. It's, it's very custom. And Provia's big things are security, durability, beauty, and then energy efficiency, energy efficiency, excuse me. So I just want to share some of those values. I think it makes a big difference for you folks to understand what the Provia door is in the door system. So you have an idea that it's, you know, by no means is it a cheap system. And I think the warranty speaks volumes to that, but I just like you to have a little insight about the, the manufacturer of this door. You know, I would have more trouble if you were doing different colors.
Yeah, me too.
I, I think there's a real symmetry here and that, you know, we've talked about how we have to adapt to the 21st century and this makes sense to me.
Jay, I have a question. How, how, how will you match the color of the door to the color on 36 Melrose's red door?
Yeah, so we've picked a valise red and swatch when Jacob and I had checked these doors. They were almost identical, less obviously from the wear and tear, right, of the, of the color fading. But we also have, have the ability to do an identical color swatch match. So if we're able to pull the swatch for this color, we can paint this door to the exact swatch given. So I just want the committee to know that we can, you know, do an exact match if a swatch is given or say the committee gave a swatch of a red that they want to see, we can make that color on the production of the door.
And so to follow up on that, so this might be the part where you said it is a custom product. I'm in favor of having the doors be as close as possible, the two, the left and the right door, 36 and 38, be as similar as possible. The color is important. Evidently, we, we can't match the configuration of the panels. But coming close with the color is, would certainly be a plus. And I guess when you say it's custom, part of that is the color, but another part might be the actual dimension of the door, like, am I right about that? That they would kind of make it just right to fit in the opening and?
Correct, Steve. So yeah, so we take precise measurements of, of each property, right? So this door system is built to 38 Melrose. This is not existing door. This does not sit in a warehouse. It is produced to one-eighth of an inch spec of the rough opening. And that's why we're able to give the warranty we give with the Four Seasons. You know, this built, this door system is built in the Northeast for the Northeast.
Okay, I understand. Okay, so the customization includes the size, getting the size exactly right for your rough. And also while they're at it, they can match the color or come closer, something like that. I think it sounds great.
Is, is wood grain something you have to customize, Jay?
Well, there's options. So you have, you have different looks to the door. Right now, it's, you know, wood can be a smooth finish or a wood grain finish. Now I would say it's closer to a smooth finish, but yeah, that's one of the customizations you can add to a door system. So, you know, we do a lot of different, if it's an oak finish and it's not, and even if it's painted over, we have the ability to give it the grain of a oak door. Amazing.
Okay, I, I, I'm in favor of trying to get it to match the other. So, so the 36 and 38 sort of match. And it sounds like the wood grain part is not that significant. Meaning that
It's smooth.
Existing door has a very little grain showing probably, probably just looks like paint, doesn't it?
It is a smooth, both doors are a smooth finish from my inspection of the doors.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend the smooth finish then.
Yeah. Do we need, do we need a, a subcommittee?
I don't think so. If you want to remand the details to staff, I'm, I'm comfortable doing that, you know. You know, I think, you know, if, you know, here are the other commissioners, you've sent them and Craig and Catherine, how they, how they feel.
Uh, you know, I agree with everything that's been put forward. I think, you know, ideally if we could get a five-panel door, that would be the best, but if that's not an option, certainly the color and the texture, the finish are very important. And as long as those match, then that's kind of the best, best-case scenario. And I would comment, I mean, it's unbelievable how expensive this door is.
I tend to agree with, and apologies, I'm mute, I'm kind of after, again, transit, but I tend to agree with, this, this is how it's best addressed and so be it.
Great, thank you, Senam. So it's sounding like, you know, you're moving towards a motion to approve as submitted. You know, I think I, I would like to see just a sample to, you know, on site. So maybe you could just remand a site visit to staff to appear the sample on site.
Okay.
To clarify, so does the sample mean like?
That they're holding there, you know, what he's holding.
Okay, so.
Kind of get like a whole door to show up, right?
No, no, no.
So we're proposing accepting this, remanding this to approval by staff?
Yes.
I propose that?
Did someone second it?
I'll second it.
They did.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I'll do the roll call. Yep. Steve Dunwell?
Yes.
Anne Kilgus?
Yes.
Laura Shea?
Yeah.
Senam Kumahia?
Yes.
Craig Douglas?
Yes.
And Catherine Sikora Nelson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So, so Jacob, maybe, you know, we can set a time for me just to come out and take a look at the sample on site.
Jacob, thank you for being such a diligent neighbor. I mean, this is hard work and expensive and, and thank you.
I appreciate that. The, the thing I wasn't going to share until you had made your decision was that my wife was the Director of Events at MoMA and the Legion of Arts and, and DeYoung. So this is, this has all been very important to us from the beginning. But I didn't, I didn't want that to seem like a play to your, to your affections.
Well, well, some of us appreciate good art. A lot of us do.
Let me add quickly too, that maybe sometime in the future, many years down the road, you'll end up replacing the, the other door and then you can make them match.
Yeah.
Well, whoever does it, whoever owns that other door, who owns the other door?
The owner, the owner lives in Florida and rents out the property. So we'll, we'll see when she decides to sell that property, but.
I missed that. Somehow I thought that you had taken over both of them, but Francine.
Oh, no.
Francine still owns it?
Yeah, Francine still owns.
Okay.
Oh, I see. Okay, well.
Okay.
Still, okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, Jacob. I'll, I'll be in touch. And Jay, thank you too. I'll be in touch to schedule a time just to come out and take a look.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
Thank you all very much, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you.
Right, I think. Oh, there was no public comment. There's no one else here, so we can just get that. So I will just end with staff comments. I think if you listen carefully to Steve's opening script, that our remote hearings have been extended through June 30, 2027. So I think that's good news. So. You know, I, I think it's more efficient to be doing this, you know, at least from staff time and not having to get people in and out of City Hall. And I think those are all my comments.
Jay, did you have a question about Cedar Place?
I do. I, my plan was to discuss that with Joe after the meeting. But I'll, I'll just preview it here because very likely it'll come before the meeting, before this commission, you know, some many weeks from now, having to do with the alley that's adjacent to my property, which is called South Cedar Place. In the past, it had cobblestones on one side and asphalt on the other side. The asphalt probably was on top of the previous cobblestones. And recently, the water company came in, dug up a chunk of the alley to remove lead pipe, and they left a mess behind. And now we have to discover what is the way forward to restore, at least either to restore it to the condition it was before, which was half and half, not a great solution, or to come up with a better solution and to figure out how we get that done with the lowest possible difficulty. So that, that's where we're at on that one.
So Steve, after we adjourn, I'll, I'll stay on and we can talk.
Okay, good.
So are we ready to adjourn?
Yeah, if someone wants to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone.
Be here now. Bye bye.
Good meeting.
Just going to stop the recording.